So I'd like to introduce Mitchell Rogers. He currently works as a Berlin police officer. He's going to take, not take the place, but take the vacancy that's created by Sergeant Fran Glynn retiring. And then, at the same time, we're gonna have Rick Pettit be promoted to sergeant, which will be at a later meeting. And Mitchell does have his wife. I said, "Don't say your first wife, just say your wife."[44.01][44.01](Laughter). I made that mistake. You don't say that.
My wife, Gabrielle, my mother, Robin, and my father, Fred.
How you doing?
Hello.
So I just want to explain that, you know, we're not adding another officer, we're just replacing someone that is retiring. And then, the sergeant that's retiring will have a sergeant take his place on July 1st because Sergeant Glynn will be gone.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah.
Uh-oh.
Hearing none. Second.
So where are you presently living?
I currently live in East Brookfield.
Okay, and what attracted you to West Boylston, that great town?
Bigger town.
The chief. You should say the chief.
The chief. The opportunity. I work in Berlin currently, so I was looking for somewhere a little busier, closer to home, because I travel 55 minutes to Berlin now, so it cut my commute in half, which would be nice. Heard nothing but great things about the town.
What do you know about us?
It's like triple the population of the town I work in now. You got a huge reservoir, a lot of good restaurants.
More to come.
Yeah. Surrounded by Worcester Holden, Sterling, Glynn's right there. 10,000, 11,000 residents, just about.
Did you grow up in the area?
I grew up in Spencer.
Okay.
I worked in Paxton, went to Annemarie College.
Nice.
I read there my bachelor's degree.
Very good.
I don't have any tough questions.
I don't either.
Yeah.
Neither.
I'm off the table.
We'll make it easy on you.
I can't believe you didn't say you came here because of the chief, but that's fine.
Well, you came tonight because of me.
I just thought that was known.
So concurrents on the appointment of Mitchell Rogers as a patrol officer effective April 29, 2019, for a term to expire April 28, 2020. That's step two, $30.38 an hour. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second and the other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
I can't oppose it, right?
After what he said.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Now, when does he officially?
It'll be April 29th. He has been coming down to the police station, getting to know the guys, the area. He has done a lot of ride-alongs. He's passed his physical and psychological already, ready to go. His chief, Tom Galvin, was very supportive, understood why he was coming here. And what's gonna happen is, because Sergeant Glynn has time and some other things going on, Mitchell will be going, like we always do, he'll be on day shift, 3 to 11 shift, 11 to 7 shift training. And then, by the time Sergeant Glynn is actually gone, he will be ready to go.
Great.
And take his spot. So, yeah, it'd be great.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We need a photo.
Yes, I have a picture.
Picture?
Yes. Yeah, so we're, yeah, we're looking for a picture.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Yes, you did a good job. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Mark's master.
Yes. I know Mark very well.
Put him in the middle.
Yeah, he's a good guy. Very nice to meet you. Thank you very much. Right here.
Switch, switch, switch.
Why switch?
Because I want him in the middle.
Tough what? Tough what? Tough what? Okay. Not what I thought you said. I was gonna slap you.
Ooh. I love that. It's a broad chat. All right, one, two, three, and one more. Pat with the one step. There you go. It may be cut off there. One, two, three. Thank you.
Chief, thanks so much for coming.
Chief.
What's your problem?
I was like, what did he say? I know that, that's why I was making sure, and I couldn't tell who it was.
John told on the ground.
What do they do? Good things will come, you know.
You gotta get rid of everything before you get to that.
Public hearing.
The agenda's gotta be done.
Next item on the agenda, I'm talking too slow. Is the DPW?
Actually, the town clerk is here. If we could take something out of order.
That's fine. What sort of is it?
It's the second item under new business. Consider voting to designate the senior center located at 120 Prescott Street in West Boylston as the polling location for the town, and provide notification of that change in the May informational mailer and other local media.
What Nancy said.
I have the approval from, what's her name, Bridget Simmons Murphy.
Great.
At Secretary Galvin's office. Came up and walked over the building and asked a lot of questions and said it looked perfect. So we have her approval. And the two requirements she's given us, well, three actually. First, your vote tonight, that has to be done first. Then, like Nancy said, we have to send a mailing to every household that has a registered voter within 20 days of the election, before 20 days of the election. And we have to post it in three public places in each precinct. So we'll do that, just like we do a warrant. And we're also, Nancy and I were talking about posting on the digital sign, asking for an article in the item, town website, public TV station, and whatever else anybody can think of where we can put this, so everyone will know. And one last thing is, I will be mailing tomorrow a thank you to our Lady of Good Counsel Church for their many years of support for our voting there. I think we've been here for 10 years.
Maybe we should, the board should send a letter to the church also, and I'll sign it. Yeah, I have no, so we need a vote to designate the senior center?
Yes, please.
Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Have a motion, a second, and the other discussion?
I do have a question. I was up there today, and there was concern about doing this and having food brought in, because they have to have the kitchen sanitized before the Board of Health will completely sign off, and I literally just heard this a few hours ago.
So did they mention?
Like, for the workers, so I don't know if that's going to be a concern or not for, this is kinda quick. In my eyes, it wouldn't be, because we're bringing the food in.
Right.
From my understanding, in the past, different people have brought the food in. So, and I know you're there all day.
Right.
But I guess they just found out that they have to have, because it's a commercial kitchen, which has not been the way earlier, and that it has to be sanitized. Now, I know Lisa was working on it, I don't know if those dates.
Well, I'd just say a couple of things. It's not till June, the election, and I don't think they'll be using the kitchen. I don't think the election won't be cooking.
We won't use the kitchen, we usually use.
Usually just bring things in.
A different room.
Right, so I don't know if that's separate, so I just.
Yeah, and the issue with the senior center, that just needs to be cleaned, and it's not an issue.
Okay.
Also, you know, it's a brand-new kitchen.
I hadn't heard about that.
Like I said, I was just up there today, and that was something that they were not aware of, that they have to do.
It's still three months, three months away, so.
And one of the things, no matter how much advertising we do, we're gonna have to have somebody at Our Lady of Good Counsel redirecting, because people will go there. That's where they've been voting for 10 years, they're gonna say, "Oh, I gotta go vote." They're not gonna know what's on the warrant, what we're voting for, they're just gonna show up to vote at the wrong place. So we have to have somebody there all day to redirect.
Good suggestion.
Well, I think we should put our, have the DPW put our sign that we usually have in the center of town, saying voting right here.
Do we gotta do something? It's gotta be, because people will go to Our Lady of Good Counsel.
I agree.
A sign on the church is not enough.
No.
You need an actual person.
On the driveway.
Oh, I don't mind, I don't mind the sign, but I'm thinking out on the driveway with that, that A-frame sign we use for election.
Maybe we could, maybe we could put the emergency sign, use the emergency sign.
We could do that.
Move it there and say, "No voting, if you wanna vote."
Whatever they can put in that sign.
Yeah.
But we just have to have something there. Not necessarily, you know, a living, breathing person, but something there to let people, because people will go there.
Oh, yes, they will, yep.
Well, and the other thing, too, is you can look into, I'm sure the church would put it in their bulletin, and there wouldn't be a fee for that. So that would be something that I would recommend as well.
Thank you. That's a great idea.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, and the other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so this will, this, our official notification to the residents will be through our May mailer.
Yes, and we're gonna use a bright pink.
On this bright pink paper.
So we don't have to do a second mailing? We can use it.
We do not, because that goes, we mail that out to 3,088 residences.
We send to every address.
Great.
And we're allowed to put this in an envelope with the other announcements, but it has to be on its own paper, and it needs to be a bright color, that's why the pink.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, and we can also announce it at town meeting in May?
Sure.
So that would be.
We'll announce, we'll announce it every week at this meeting also, and then town meeting.
Great.
People will show up.
Well, I think one of the things is, people drive home from work and go, "Oh, today's election day," and they vote there. So that's gonna be a little different now, because then.
Maybe this is when we put a message on the electronic sign, and they're different color, so that people will see it.
Something stands out.
Stand out. And maybe we hit the Board of Directors of Angelbrook and Hillside Village.
Let them know they have newsletter.
Maybe this is something the school could help us out with as well, sending an email to parents.
Email, yeah, on that weekly, annual, okay.
Do we normally put it on the light bill as well, that's election day?
We can do that.
We can ask them to put it on the light.
Yep.
Oh, great ideas.
And I agree 100% with Pat. There will still be people, let's say they didn't know, that will try, we'll try to tell everybody, but, okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Thank you. Nancy, is there someone else here for something on the agenda?
Yes. We have this young lady here who is from Harry and Fran Brewing Company. She's requesting the one-day license to have her event at 235 West Boylston Street. You can come forward.
Okay, so this is a request from Henry and Fran Brewing Company for a one-day license to sell beer at 235 West Boylston Street from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM on Saturday, April 27th. That's our town cleanup day.
They're after the, they're from 3:00 to 7:00.
So it'll be right after our town cleanup.
Right after the cleanup day.
Okay. Hello.
Hi.
What do you want to tell us about this event?
I'm just newly the manager of Henry and Fran Brewing Company. We've been a company for three years at our current location, 185. And with the weather getting nicer, we thought it'd be fun to have an event at Jim Trotchulos' property, which we are looking to rent as a new location in Suite B. We're pending federal approval at this time for that second location, so we just wanted to put up the event in the back part, near the garages, and have the parking by Jake's Cafe. And with respect to the other businesses, they're all, they will all be closed at that time by 2:00, so we just wanted to have it later in the evening.
I'm just kidding. Where do you say, where are you located?
185 Laurel Street in West Boylston.
Okay.
We've had a brewery there for a couple of years now.
Right. Go ahead.
This is, this is where on West Boylston Street?
West Boylston Street, 235.
Next to Jake's.
Jake's.
To the right.
It's to the right, so the large building, like, right behind there is where we would put the events, all roped off.
And you say, did you say you're gonna be, you're possibly moving to that location too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so we're working on federal approval at this time.
Okay, and this is gonna be an outdoor event?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, and the event would consist of just tasting, or what is the actual event?
The actual event would be a tasting event. We would limit it to two, two drinks per person throughout the two hours that they would be there. And we're gonna cap it at 40 people, or the two hours, so it'd be 3 to 5 and 5 to 7.
And is there food served, or just tasting?
We would have food served.
Okay.
We would have a food truck as well.
So if I'm at, like Jake's, it's, I drive in that driveway, go down and to the right, correct, in the back?
You would drive in between Jake's and our building, there's, we would make that a one-way, so you park right behind there, and we would have the one-way going back out, and then have traffic to the right, way on the right.
Okay.
Okay, and the chief, chief of police has looked it over.
The fire chief, initially, the proposal was to have the event in front, to the right of the building. The police chief and fire chief did not care for that location, they thought there wasn't enough room to actually plan and lay everything out properly and have people safe. Then they came up with the second location, which is in back. Both of them are fine with that. We have, we have the liability insurance, we have a map, we have the cert, we have the servers that are certified to serve, and that all is attached to their permit. So the chief is fine, both chiefs are fine, they're gonna go out and check it one more time before they open, but I heard you say something about a food truck.
Mm-hmm.
Which is a great idea, but wherever you get for a food truck, you need to make sure they have a permit, and one of the board's licenses is transient vendor permit, so they will have to have permission from the property owner to be able to park there the day of that event, so they're gonna need to file that sooner than later.
Okay.
Okay.
And if we're not able to secure all that, then we would just not have a food truck.
Okay.
Will we have a meeting between now and?
We do, we have a meeting next Wednesday.
Oh, we can put it on that day.
Yeah, yeah, we could squeeze it in, so if you, we could come to see me, and we can, and I can email you the form, we could do it really quick.
Before next Wednesday, we have a meeting.
If you wanna work with you and get what you need, so, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, one other question, is there entertainment going to be there, or just tasting?
No, no, we wouldn't have any live music or anything like that going on.
Okay.
Are you selling tickets, or is it?
We would, we would pre-sell the tickets ahead of time on Eventbrite, so that we would know the limit of people already capped out, so people coming in off the street wouldn't be able to just come in, in order to keep the crowd control.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion, a second, and the other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thanks very much. Good luck.
Good luck.
Okay, and. Let's see. Just go down to request a one-day transit vendor license for the townwide cleanup day committee to allow Frozone to provide a gelato to the volunteers in the parking lot of Town Hall.
Make a motion to approve and waive any fee that would be associated with it.
Sir. Have a motion and a second, and the other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next item is, we have a continued public hearing. Do we need to read the notice again, Nancy?
Actually, this one is a new public hearing.
The 715 one?
Hold on a second. This, okay, I'm sorry, it is continued, they both continue, because we looked at them and then, yes.
To review and consider changes to the Board of Selectment's fees for businesses and alcohol beverage licenses.
Correct. Mr. Crowley asked that I sent him everything in Excel, because he wanted to manipulate some things.
Looking at it, I don't think we need to do anything. We're right, we're right in the middle, compared towns, same size, there are a few more expensive than us, or a few less than us, but nothing jumps out at me as, that needs to be changed. I don't know if anybody else.
No, I, that's what I remember from the last one, I don't, let me just take a look at this one, I think.
One thing that we.
I thought was, was one thing that we thought was low.
The alcohol ones I'm talking about, the, and even looking at the, all of the other types of licenses, eh, nothing.
Nothing jumped out.
The one that jumped out at me was, we charge an awful lot for pool tables.
So this one here is.
That's why I'm happy.
Various different types of alcohol.
Are we just talking alcohol in this public hearing?
Both.
Public, in the.
Alcohol and business licenses. The one thing that I would like to add that we don't have right now, is some people ask for a one-day entertainment, and I know I was asked by Nola that just opened, because she wants, they wanna do a grand opening, and they wanna do an outside jazz band, and they asked if they could get a one-day entertainment. I said, "We don't have such a thing," but I would ask the board, I told them, "We're reconsidering our license fees," and I would ask the board if that's something they might entertain. It would be, not only a one-day entertainment, I think it would be one, it would also be good to offer a one-day transient vendor license and a one-day common vic. If you had a food truck that wanted to go to an event, such as the one that she's having here, that way, if they're only gonna be here once, it could be $20 for the one day rather than 100 for the annual, unless, just a thought.
Does anybody have any concerns on that? I don't mind adding that to the list.
Can you go over those two, there was three, the three that you're, you're.
There would be a one-day entertainment.
Okay, that I get.
One-day transient vendor, if you had a food truck that wanted to come in and do an event, such as what she's having for one day, and a one-day common vic.
So the food trucks that currently come into town at various locations, do they all have to have a common victicular license from the town?
Yes.
Currently?
Yes.
So they have to do the yearly thing, and then get the one-day transient vendor license for each place they're gonna go to?
No, what they do is, they get a transient vendor for the year, and they get approvals from the property owners of each of the properties.
Got it. So as far as the food trucks, if she picks a food truck for grumpies, they've been there the longest, then all she's gotta do is get the property owner.
That's exactly, that's exactly it, yes.
So you don't have to actually, if you pick with this, get with Nancy, there's a few food trucks that are already licensed in town, you wanna go with one, I would assume it's just easier to go with one of those.
Mm-hmm, and I can send you copies, I can direct you to the Board of Health, who also licenses, you know, a number of trucks, so we can give you options.
Okay, I agree.
Okay? Perfect.
Mr. Chairman, so it's $100 for the food trucks for the year, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if we charged $50 for a one-day.
Or 20, even if you did $20 per day. Let's go.
Oh, I'd say at least 25. I was thinking 50 for one day, but I'd say at least 25 for one day.
Yeah, I think 25 would, I don't think anybody would complain about that either.
Right.
Yeah, but they gotta get two then, they gotta get a transient vendor, one-day transient vendor, and a one-day common vic license.
Mm-hmm.
So you're talking 25 each?
Yeah.
For $50.
So for another 50, they can get a, they can get a one-year.
Yeah.
No, they would need two.
Correct.
It's 200.
Doesn't need, it would be 200, one of each?
The. Transient vendor is $40.
Yeah. And the other one is how much?
100.
It would be 140.
So if we wanted to do a 10-day transient, $10 one-day transient vendor, if we're doing a.
No, we're giving it away.
And these people are coming here for one day, you're gonna hit 'em over the head for coming here for one day?
Yeah.
Are we here to make money?
No, I don't think we are. These licenses.
$10 means nothing to me, and if I'm going for a license, $25 makes sense.
To me, it's more of your, the idea is to get them to, they have to come here, have all their ducks in a row to be able to come do the event. I don't think the purpose of a, you know, $100 common victicular license and a $40 transient vendor fee for the year, we're not, no, we're not making any money. That's just to make sure these people are following our rules.
Right.
And say, otherwise, if we didn't have it, they could just show up at their food truck, and we wouldn't have it.
Right.
So, to me, you know, it's, it's one day, you're gonna charge them half the price of getting it for the year?
Yeah.
I think I would go with the $10, you know. Let's start with $10. I agree with you, and then, you know, if the, if we get every day one transient vendor, every day one event, then we can go back on the chart more. Start with low.
As a business person, I don't think you're gonna lose anybody with $15, so I think $25.
How much they will make in a day? For them, you know, like, three hours, four hours, how much they are going to make?
Three, four hundred bucks, I don't know. Five hundred bucks.
They're not coming unless they're making money.
Yeah.
So, and to me, $10 isn't worth the paper it's written on.
I'm not, I don't feel all that strongly about it one way or the other. You guys are, you sound like you're, you're saying, "No, it should be 25, I don't have any problem with that."
So what are we at, 25?
I would. I would.
25.
She would. Ron recommended 25, I would, I would second that, that's the motion she made.
Okay, so we're gonna add that, we're gonna add, well, first of all, okay, we can discuss this, and then ask the public for comment? Or we can add things to it first?
What's the motion?
The motion is to add a one-day license under.
All three categories of each.
Oh, this is under mobile vendor, right?
No, there's three, there's a common vic, one-day common vic, one-day transient vendor, and a one-day entertainment.
So that's 25 each? No, I thought we were just talking about mobile vendor first.
So I thought we were.
So 25, they're asking for the mobile vendor.
Okay.
So that's the motion, the second, correct?
You're saying mobile vendor, there is no mobile vendor license, there's a.[1587.13] a...
He means a transient vendor.
Transient vendor.
Transient vendor.
What is, we have a license that's called a mobile vendor license.
It's transient vendor.
That's the same thing.
Okay, so it's the mobile vendor, right?
So, that is if somebody wants to come in and sell hot dogs for one day.
They would need two licenses if they want to sell hot dogs. They would need the mobile vendor and a common VIC license.
Right.
So, we'd be hitting them up with two, 25, 50 bucks.
For the year, it would be, a year would be...
140.
140.
140.
So, make no sense. Okay, so the motion in the second we have right now, I believe, is for the mobile vendor, $25. Do I hear any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Are you opposed?
I oppose.
For the 25 for the mobile vendor?
Yeah, that's too much.
Okay. So, now the common VIC, what does the board think? Do we want a one-day license for the year? And if so, how much do we want it? Want to make it 10?
We're going to make one of 10. It should be the, the mobile vendor.
25.
Okay, so, is that your motion?
That's my motion for 25.
I'll second.
25 for the common VIC, one-day license. Do I hear any discussion?
For the year, it's $100. For one day, it's $25.
Correct.
I don't think so.
Okay, so I have a motion, just...
That's too much.
Okay, I just, I guess, now that we're thinking about...
Yeah, the motion, yes.
Is there, is there a one-day fee for the liquor license?
Yes.
Okay, how much is that?
$50.
$50, and the year for that is 15, is 1,800, right?
No, that's full liquor license is 1,800.
Oh, so how much is just a...
15 is a beer and wine.
1,500 for beer and wine, which is what they...
Beer and wine is 1,500, and we charge 50 for one day.
Correct.
So, this is a lot bigger percentage for these than, than those, which I think the one-day license for $50 is too cheap. Okay, I don't, now where is that, Nance, under the, the, it's under the, oh, one day? One-day beer and wine?
I mean, if you're, you're saying it's too cheap, and look at all the surrounding towns.
No, it's too cheap compared to what we're doing with the other ones. No, don't you agree? I mean, the...
Which is why I initially said that.
We're talking a hot dog stand, hot dog stand is going to pay roughly, what, 30% of the year?
I don't think you're going to get too many food trucks that are not, that are going to come here for one day, that are not going to want to get their full year license.
Okay, so I have a motion in the second for a one-day common VIC license for $25. Do, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I oppose.
Okay. So...
So, they can do 25 for a year license.
Yeah. For 100, for $75 more.
Exactly.
75 and 40.
You know what? You go to an amusement park, they charge you $70 to walk in. You want to buy a pass for the year, it's 120.
Exactly.
Right. And you don't think they're going to make a few hundred bucks plus when they come in here?
Mm-hmm.
Or else they wouldn't be coming?
I agree.
And then we also wanted to look at a one-day entertainment license.
So, we would charge for that?
$100.
Let's make a one-day 110. Now, the one-day entertainment, live entertainment, is that live entertainment?
Yeah.
It's only $50.
That's a yearly.
Yeah, the yearly is $50.
The yearly common VIC was 40, and we made, we made that 25 for a one-day. I mean...
This is painful. So, do I hear a motion on that, one-day license for live entertainment?
I'll make a motion to do that for 25 as well.
Second.
I guess the only thing I'd say in this is that, I guess the group or the business pays it, right, I would think, for one-day live entertainment?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Do I have a motion in a second for a one-day live entertainment for $25? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Okay. No, I wanted to get all the changes done. Any other changes in regards to the licenses that we're looking at? Nope. Okay, pool table. And, okay, anybody from the public have any questions? Hearing, seeing none?
Go ahead, Dave.
I just have a quick question. The proposal that Mrs. Lucio made about the one-day, are there any other towns that do that?
Oh, yeah, many.
And are their fees comparable to what?
They're on here. The board has, has them in their packet.
What, for the one, one-day stuff?
Yes.
I don't think we have.
I don't think, I don't see any one-days.
You look...
We only have the stuff that, the licenses that we have.
Oh, on those, no, but a one-day for beer and wine?
That we have.
Okay, yeah.
The alcohol ones, we're, we're in line with.
Yeah, no other, no, I don't have any other one-days, but it was asked, and I thought it might be something nice to offer.
If somebody really is only going to come in here for just one day, and they're going to come in no matter what, they're not going to buy the full license. They just got it half-priced, they're happy.
Well, I never thought of it. NOLA had said, you know, they, they're thinking about doing a ribbon cutting, and they want it, do like a New Orleans theme, and, you know, do we do entertainment licenses for one day? And I said, "Well, we don't have a one-day. We have an annual." And he goes, "Well," you know, he wanted it outside because he doesn't have any room, obviously, inside for that. And I said, "You know, we're going to have a public hearing. I'll bring it up to the board."
You tell him you said okay.
Aye, he'll be quite pleased.
Save too many. Okay, saved him money. He doesn't have to buy a whole year, he can buy one day. That's good.
Okay, anything else?
I still, I have to agree with Raj. I think it's too expensive, just for one day. I mean, I think the town should be a little bit more reasonable. I mean, especially if somebody, if somebody wants to come in and buy a year pass, that's fine. But for one day, I mean, do they have to have all three of them for one day, or just two of them?
Two, well, it depends on what you want to do. If it's live entertainment, one day would be $25. If it's a hot dog truck or something, it would be $50 for one day. They'd have to buy one of each.
So, that's $75?
No. Live entertainment would be 25, but a food truck wouldn't need live entertainment. So, they would just need the common VIC and the mobile vendor.
Which is 25 each?
Yep, $50.
I think you should just do, give them both of them for 35 bucks. I think that's, that's fair.
Like John said, you're not scaring away a business for $15.
I understand that.
Right. And we usually, in regards to town events and fundraises and things like that, we usually waive the fees anyway.
You always waive the fees, the PTA.
PTA does that.
We also waive the fees. At next meeting you're going to have, again, we'll be selling the flowers on the common with West Bath, and you waive the fee for them.
And we don't have a, we don't have, I don't think we have a lot of one-day vendor trucks coming.
And like I said, any business that's, would buy a year's license, if they think they're going to do it twice in a year.
Yes, the business.
I mean, businesses know what they're doing. They're not, they're not throwing money away.
Okay, thank you. Any other? Hearing none?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, do I hear a motion in regards to the changes in the fees?
I'll make a motion to approve all the changes to the fees. Is, who are you talking about?
Second.
Okay, a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. That's it. Now, we have another public hearing. Raj, do you have that in regards to, this is, is this, this is continued?
This is also a continuation. This was the building department fees.
Review and consider changes to the building, electrical, and plumbing fees. Okay. Do you want to come up and...
I feel comfortable now that $10 is okay. What we, what we did was we took and went through all the towns and found out what their fees were. And we're, this charge makes us compatible with all the towns around. A little bit lower in some, a little bit higher in others, but on an average, we're doing, this will bring us up to, up to par with them. I also tried to make it a little simpler, not only for the contractor to be able to figure out how much he has to pay for a permit, but also the public can look at it, and it makes a little bit more sense. You don't have to kind of all the fixtures, worry about how many inspections you're going to need. It covers a lot more with just one fee. And that was the intent of, of the fees that I hear. So, we raised the fee for plan review through select recommendations for the commercial plan review. It was originally asked and agreed we should charge $1,000, but go up a little bit of time. I think a $750 would be fair enough to go over a commercial plan. Most of the plans that we get in for commercial are large, and there's a big pile of drawings to go through. But as far as residential is concerned, I feel comfortable with those fees, $100. And that's not always charged for every time a plan comes in. It depends upon the scope of the project. If it's a very large project, then, you know, it's going to take me a long time if you go over the plan review, then we would initiate that fee.
Now, residence, residential certificate of occupancy, it used to be 25, and then there's nothing on the right side.
That is all going to be included in the building, as a building fee. That's why we went up, when they come up with a building permit.
It just covers... Covers all that.
It'll all be covered. So, we don't have, we don't fee them to death with six lines, seven lines of fees going down. We're trying to streamline it as much as we can.
So, it's $10 per one, $100 plus $10 per one day?
I looked up that, $25 for the occupancy, for the certificate of occupancy, very, in the past, they hadn't, haven't even been charged.
Okay.
Great.
So, you've got new one- and two-family dwellings. The existing fee schedule for the plumbing permit is 100 all of base fee plus $50 for each required inspection. You're going up to 180. When I'm building a new house, how many plumbing inspections are there generally in a one- and two-family dwelling, right?
You have at least two, minimum two, if you have to have a rough. But there's other things going on here, too, bringing the line up from the street, underground, inspections of the piping, and this.
So, are we going from $100 plus 50, 50 bucks each time the inspector shows up to $180, soup to nut?
Up to three, up to three inspections, I believe I have.
No, it doesn't say up to three inspections on there. That's why I'm asking that question.
No, it's up, it's posted, all right.
So, in parentheses under that, it should say up to three?
Up to three, yeah, up to three inspections.
That makes more sense.
I apologize for that, not being on there.
So, Pat's pointing at, so if you did a perimeter drain inspection, that would be one inspection?
Right.
Is that part of the plumbing inspection?
No, the perimeter drain around the foundation is done during the foundation inspection. That'd be done under the building.
Good. So, I, we didn't get a comparison to other towns, right?
I had given you, the last time I gave you...
Okay.
A copy of that. I do have a...
But you, you say we're, we're, we're in, we're right in the range?
We're right in, yes.
The range from business.
These fees are right in line with everybody else.
Go ahead, you can use screen.
So, if I'm building two houses on a couple of acres, does that mean that that's new construction, and I'd be paying $150, and that will include...
I wouldn't allow you to build on two houses on one lot.
Oh, okay. So, say I had your permission and I had enough. So, let's just say I'm building two.
So, any board would have to get involved.
The commercial, that's the commercial building?
So, would that be commercial?
If, if it's, if it's an apartment, yes. Over four, yes.
Okay. So, if I'm coming in and just building a new house in town?
Then it's just a two-family, single...
New construction?
Construction, yeah.
Okay.
That would be $100 fee plus $50. That would be 150, plus, that includes three inspections.
That includes three inspections, yeah.
Plus 60 per each addition.
And is that, is three an average of a new construction?
I do, a minimum of three each time. I do, do a, like, the bottom of the hole inspection, I do the foundation inspection, then I'll do a framing inspection and insulation, and the final inspection is, 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 so I mix four.
Okay.
And if there's other inspections in, required, because sometimes I go in there and they didn't quite do everything that was up the code, then I would go back again, and we would charge them for that.
Okay.
Extra inspection.
So, on a house, you would do four?
Typically four.
But that's 90% of the time. You'd do those four inspections. So, why don't we make the base price includes four inspections, and then anything above that, because...
That's, that's, that's fine.
Yeah. I don't know if we want to raise it a little bit, but I don't, since it's automatically four everybody, why should we connect? One sec, one second, John had a question. Do you know what I'm saying, John? I don't know if you have, because he says it's four every time for residential.
Oh, you got a foundation, you got a...
You got a whole, bottom of the hole. I checked the hole for...
Foundation, rough, rough and finish.
Rough, foundation, rough, insulation, and finish.
I gotta think of something.
How much you charge now? It's just $10 per?
For what?
The residential building permit fee, $100. No, at, at this time, you know, existing fee is only $10.
It's $10 per $1,000.
For $1,000. Here, 100, 100 plus $10 per thousand, okay.
That's more than 50.
So, in this 100, what other, what other things are covered in the 100? You, you did say, you know, so...
Well, that's, that's, the inspections that we do are covered. I mean, what, what does the $100 do?
Mm-hmm.
Goes into the general fund.
No, 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 no. What is the charge as far? $100? Now, we are charging only $100.
It's for the initial plan review. It's for check for code compliance, and then the other $100 is to cover inspections out in the field for what we just said, for areas of inspection.
And also, and also it covers for the certificate of occupancy?
I'm sorry?
Also, it included the certificate of occupancy. There's $25.
Oh, yes, true, too. That would be included in there.
Well, the final inspection is this thing for the...
That's also included with it. I was reading, I think I was reading the wrong one.
Yeah.
The building permit.
I was looking at, I was looking at...
Under the building permit.
Yeah, I was looking at new construction.
Under your plumbing or electric.
Or the gas or electric. So, those, so that was the one that said includes three?
Yeah, well, the plumbing, we just added includes three. The electric already had it.
So, then I guess the question I asked him was, was incorrect, so...
Right, so you're saying there's four inspections, there's four inspections.
No, you told us about the building.
Yeah, building.
So, how about for like an electrical, I was, and I, so the electrical, what was the one we were looking at?
Yeah, so commercial, I think commercial's electrical. So, you got up to 20, 20 plugs, 20 outlets, plugs or switches, whatever it is, is one fee.
Right.
So, over the, over that, how, how you determine? I'm talking about commercial, because obviously, commercial building is going to have...
Okay, um...
Commercial electrical?
It's going to have...
It says 150 base fee includes three inspections plus 60 each additional inspection.
250 base fee.
All right, this is...
New construction.
We're looking at commercial. But, yeah, okay. John was looking at commercial, you were looking at...
Oh, commercial, you're looking at commercial, John?
Yeah.
Says 50.
150 base fee, 25 for each meter.
No, this is, this is the one we're going to. 250.
Go ahead, answer.
Three, okay.
Commercial, the one, and I brought this up the last meeting, the one I was thinking we're undercharging for is commercial.
Plan review.
Plan review and electric and plumbing, because there's a lot more work on a $20,000 square foot building than there is on a $2,000 square foot house.
I, I consulted our electrical inspector, and we sat down, and this is between the two of us. I mainly based this on his recommendations, because he's out looking at these, and I want to know how we, how we streamline this thing and make it a little bit easier to understand.
Yeah.
And easier to figure out what the cost would be. And then, together, we came up with these figures. So, he's, he's very much aware of what he is looking for in the commercial area. Now, there's one other thing here that you might, on the new commercial, it's $150. You have that in front of you?
Yep.
And then, that's going to go up to 250, is what the plan was. That would cover up the three inspections.
New commercial, we're talking electric?
Electric. I'm in commercial, okay? And that goes up to three, up to three inspections. And then, it's $60 per inspection after that. So, if he has to go back for more inspections...
You went, you went down to 30, though.
The, that's what I think. I, I made a mistake on that.
It says 30 for each meter plus $60.
Oh, 60 for each inspection.
Okay, then I did do it right, yeah, okay.
$30, okay. So...
John, are you still saying that's low, from what you're...
I, I know it's low for, but if, if Mike, if the building inspector is, I mean, the electrical inspector is on with it, I mean, he's the one that's doing the work.
He's, this is through, there's, there's recommendations. He's out there, he, he had a hard time counting all the outlets, making sure they're...
Well, that's, that's important. It's not fair for the shareholder or anybody to go look at a set of plans and count 75 outlets and say, "You're going to charge $5 an outlet." That's not, that's not feasible.
Right. So, we tried to come up with a figure that would, that would, that would cover everything and make it a little bit simpler to calculate and figure it out.
So, on a new, new construction, electrical, how many inspections?
Commercial or residential?
No, like residential, electrical, how many inspections would that be? It says includes three.
It includes three, includes the additional, rough wiring, and then finish. But sometimes they have to check the underground wire if they're coming from a post and digging a trench, so that's the third one, that's the third one.
But normally, it's three.
It's normally, yeah.
Normally it's two.
Two.
If, if it's underground, it's three.
Oh, okay, so three. Well, right now, doesn't everything have to be underground?
Yeah, pretty much.
Yeah. So it would be three, so that's, that's fair, it knocks out the three. So if he, if the inspector needs to, if he finds some issues and he needs to come back, that would be an additional six.
An additional fee on top of it, yeah. And that's easier to take, because now you say, well, you know, I couldn't start counting up all, all the fixtures and say, well, you already charged them for this many, and it makes it so much simpler just to give a blanket number and then give them three inspections with it.
Okay.
And if there's something wrong, move.
And what did you say about the, uh, plan review?
Plan review for which one?
From five to seven fifty.
Seven fifty.
You, you're comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with that.
Going from five to seven fifty, correct. Okay, any other discussion in regards to these issues? Uh, anybody from the public have any comments? Okay, hearing none. entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, now I'll entertain a motion to make.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, changes as noted, uh, so where was the, was there any? Was there any mistakes with everything?
The second line item, under plumbing permit fee schedule, new one and two family dwellings needs to have the same language with the, up to three inspections as the, as listed under the, uh, new construction electrical. Hundred, hundred, well, this one's a hundred and eighty dollar base fee, includes three inspections, plus sixty dollars for each additional inspection. Needs to be added to that line item.
Your motions with all the changes.
With all the changes included.
Okay. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Oh, we're gonna ask.
Okay, I did, all right. We already came out, too. He voted. Thank you, sir, for your help.
I, I make a motion.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay, interim DPW director, chapter ninety project request. Come up and just, um, I don't know if we ever officially introduced him, he was here at one of our meetings. Did we after that? We talked about it, but I don't know if we.
I think, I think we did talk about it.
Yeah, so just introduce yourself to the public. You're our current interim DPW director, tell us your name and things like that.
You just said it all.
Yeah. We'll, they'll let you do it.
Gary Kelleher, I'm your interim DPW director.
Okay, and so.
Any problems, any questions, please call the office, we'll take care of it immediately.
Okay, and what do you got on chapter ninety?
Okay, as we talked at the last meeting, I gave you the expected prices for one and a half inch overlay on four, four projects. Um, and I wanted everybody to understand, and I, and I know I mentioned it, that it could cost up to double or more to do what I feel should be done to, for road repair. And everybody should understand that an inch and a half doesn't necessarily mean an inch and a half, because all you're doing is overlaying what's there, and in case of depressions or running, uh, it could take up to three or four inches at a pop. So it'll have to go through with a leveling course first, uh, which would, would take up that, because you don't want to compact that much at once, and then the inch and a half over that. So what I've done is put, um, I've done the project, um, requests, the Mast Dot project requests for the project we've talked about, um, and I have, um, Hartwell Street, um, the upper section from the Worcester Line North is with the full depth of reclamation, plus police details and traffic safety measures, the total cost of that project would be sixty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars. The cost of, and I also have Keys Street, same, with the same, um, requirements, is seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and six dollars. And the big one is Hosmer Street, which is a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars. Now, um, the one I did not put on, I do have a, a cost for it, is a hundred and sixty-five thousand, is Temple. I really don't think Temple is in, is kind of, um, deteriorating shape as the rest. And we'd have to wait for the new allotment, anyway. We have a total of four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, we will have, once we get the new allotment, that's generally accepted by the town, the town meeting. So what I would like to do is, what I would recommend, to suggest, is that we do two jobs that are in close proximity first, uh, which would be Hosmer and Keys. Now, those are in disrepair. And, um, so, I would go in with a full depth reclamation, twelve inches, and it really serves a dual purpose, because it's, it's fully graded, the proper slope is given, it's compacted. All the material is put back to use in that base, which is good, we don't have to pay to get, pay to get rid of it or truck it. And then I would go in with, um, the, obviously the one, and, I'm, I'm sorry, the two inch base with a monolithic asphaltic berm, and then an inch and a half top core, uh, top course over that. Now, to, to me, um, first of all, the monolithic asphaltic berm is very important, and it's generally takes about, for those that don't know, and I'm, I'm sure most people do, it takes about eight pounds of bitcon per foot. And you see, a lot of places it's okay with country drainage, but you have to understand, if it hits any kind of obstruction, that's where you get your erosion problems, because sooner or later it's gonna wash out the side of the road. So you, like anybody knows, you have to tell the water where to go, so it's gotta be directed. I prefer Cape Cod. I don't like the conventional, because too many times it gets, as you've seen everywhere, it gets busted up and beat up by the plows. Generally not put down as a monolithic, generally it's put down on a pad. And then the, the one and a half inch of, um, top coat will just go up to that and, and hopefully hold it in place, but it doesn't work. The monolithic Cape Cod berm, which is what I prefer, as I said, is, um, one piece with the base coat, and that leaves the inch and a half left, so the top coat goes up to that. So you all, your, your berm is actually one piece, um, with the base, the base coat, and then the top goes up to that. So I put all these prices together, um, like I said, you, well, right now we have a hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars in, uh, current chapter ninety funds, and assuming your allotment will be the same of two hundred and ninety-five, um, next year, uh, we'll certainly have enough to do these projects. I don't like to use the whole kitty, I like to keep something in there in case something comes up. Uh, but I will put them all together, and I just wanted to bring forth to the board, um, the expected cost from chapter ninety funds.
So, so Key and Hosmer, what's the total of those two?
Excuse me?
Key and Hosmer, what's the total of those two?
The total of those two are, Keys is sixty-seven, five, Hosmer is one thirty-one, so you're looking at, uh, what's that, roughly two hundred thousand?
Those are different numbers than you just gave us.
Yeah, I got seventy-seven.
You gave us seventy-seven K and one thirty-seven K for the.
Yeah.
Okay, nice, this is my math sheet, this is my.
So Key is seventy?
I had to add into this the cost of detail, projected cost of detail, so I'm sorry, I get you that. Hosmer is one thirty-seven, three eighty-three. Keys is seventy-seven, three oh-six.
Two hundred and ten thousand.
Two fourteen, I dropped it last three, two fourteen.
So we don't have that?
You don't have that in there, but I, I, what I'm trying to do is put these forth so we get this year's price and not have to wait to July first. Uh, I assure you that these will not be done, um, prior to your new allotment.
They won't.
So I will send one in for the approval process, and following that, that, um, that construction started, then I send the second one in, because it, there wouldn't be a drop of equipment, they're both right, as you know, right next to each other, Keys and Hosmer. Hosmer.
This is from one end to the other, this complete street?
That's correct.
From one forty to, uh, Lowell Street?
Right, now Hosmer is four thousand, two hundred and thirty-six feet.
Seventy-six.
And, uh, Keys is nineteen hundred feet.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
And this lines up with the study that we did on the streets, uh, maybe, was it two years ago, that says these streets are in bad shape? I think it was two years ago?
A little bit more than that.
Paving management?
Uh, yeah, and I brought that, I brought, did bring that with me in the last meeting, it does, uh, show those roads, that some of the ones that were, were picked, obviously to be, to be done, top of the list.
And were any stated in that, be, that are in worse shape than these?
Not that I've seen. Now, as I stated at meeting, the pavement management plan, um, is just taking somebody sitting in the passenger seat of a car, um, and somebody driving the car, and just visually looking or feeling a bump and, and, and jotting it down, so, and that's why, um, I've really never agreed fully with a pavement management plan, I like to go and see the site and see the roads myself, and see what the problems are, what I think the fixes are.
So these are at the top of that list?
Yes.
That we paid for, for that study?
Yes, that was from, CMRBC, I believe, yeah.
Right, and these are at the top of that list?
Yes.
What is next after those two?
After these two would be Hartwell, first, from the Worcester Line, um, thirteen, um, thirteen hundred feet in north, and then the next one would be Temple.
Under the?
Temple is from where the state left off with the drainage construction, and that would run from forty-five hundred feet, again, north, towards the center of town.
I asked a question at one meeting, it's state road, but we're responsible?
Yeah, oh, yes, we are, we are.
Twenty-five.
That was a drainage, the road, the only reason that was worked on by the state was a, um, collaboration with the state and DCR, because of poor drainage. So the state took care of the drainage and the pavement. But that is a town road, that is, and I know you mentioned that because of the state route number, but that is a town road.
It, it is a town road, because I looked back, and we put together the mailbox policy, remember that one? And we said that we did not reimburse for, um, mailboxes hit on routes one-ten and twelve, cause those were state highways.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Have you, um, driven around town, I noticed the other day up near, watch who's the country club, we had done some work on that street, and then it seems like right before the country club that we stopped short, and that part of the road seems to be in, in bad shape, so will you?
There is a section of about, I'm, I'm guessing, cause I have, I have gone up and checked that, about fifty or sixty feet, that's severely delaminated.
Yeah.
It has been patched, um, but it's not, it's not a good patch.
Okay, so that's why it seems to be, the patch was done, but not?
Yeah, it really has to be, um, that really has to be hammered out, and redone with a hot mix, once the hot mix plants are open.
Okay.
So you get a full, instead of just throwing it in your hot box and heating it up, because the, you know, the new fresh hot mix from a plant, obviously has all the oils and tar is in it, it helps it adhere.
Okay, thank you.
But I know exactly what you're talking about, I've hit it, yeah.
Yeah, it seems short of right where we stopped, I think it was last, last year, did we finish doing that, I believe? Thank you.
So this is the twenty-year road?
This is the way I'm, I'm, I'm putting it here, in any, in any small town, fifteen to twenty.
Okay.
The Band-Aid and, um, you know, three to five.
Okay, and what?
Now, and the reason, i- if you go and do a full depth, it's a dollar forty-two a square yard. If you go and do a Band-Aid, you're not doing any reclamation, you're not doing any milling, you're putting a Band-Aid on it, so you keep adding, and adding, and adding, and pretty soon, obviously, the next time you decide to do it, when your Band-Aid doesn't work anymore, then you have to go on and do a cold planing or a milling. The price of that per square yard is two twenty-five, so it's actually more expensive to do the milling product than there's, um, for full depth. And, and you're putting in a new base, you know what's there, it's sloped, you got a nice crown, you're telling the water where to go, and obviously compacted.
And this is roughly double, the Band-Aid?
Roughly, yeah, the, the first prices I gave you, uh, for instance, um, Hosmer, the first price I gave you was fifty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty, and now we're, uh, that was a little more, it's a hundred and thirty-seven. So that's al, that's almost triple for that one, the others fall into place.
Fifty-one probably doesn't include the six or seven in details and stuff, though, that you added to that.
Yeah, right, the first prices I gave you did not.
Right, so it's really fifty-one versus one thirty-one, so.
Still.
One thirty-seven.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So, do you think we will get, uh, enough money for that Temple Street, too?
Yeah, I did not add.
Because, the reason I'm asking is, you know, Temple Street, a lot of cars goes by.
So maybe the money?
I've seen that, cause I, I did vote there, um, all I could do is quickly add those numbers up, well, I can add those numbers up for you, online.
Cause you didn't give us, you didn't give us a total on Temple, right?
He said a hundred and sixty-five.
I gave you, yes, I did, on Temple, it was a hundred and sixty-five, three eleven, not including these details, so you'd have, you'd probably, you'd add another ten thousand in there for traffic control and these details.
These details, so, one, seventy.
And the Hartwell, sixty-two.
That'd be four forty-six, what do you think we'll have it next year?
You added those up to four forty-six?
We, I added five grand to the, to the.
Okay, we have, we will, if the same allotment comes true, we'll now, our current is one eighty-five, six seventy, and your allotment is two ninety-five, oh-oh-four, you're probably adding that a lot faster than I am.
I screwed up my calculator, two ninety, what do we have right now?
Four eighty.
One eighty-five, six seventy.
Four eighty, six seventy-four. We have, right now, we have one eighty-five.
We'd be able to do Temple Street and have about thirty thousand left over.
Forty-one, so yeah, you have both.
Would that be a comfortable amount for a whole, for you, only having thirty left?
You'll have that left, you'll have four, what I consider to be major projects done, um, and you'll have that forty thousand left, um, for both overruns in any of these projects, and anything that comes up between now and next, next May.
So right now, are you asking us just to vote, are you asking us to vote on Temple now?
I'm not, I don't know that you asked me to come for a vote, you asked me to, I don't know if you have to approve the projects, if Nancy has to approve it, if I'm the authorized signatory, but like I said at the la, uh, mentioned at the last meeting, um, any, if I'm the authorized signatory, so be it, but I still bring all my projects to the board to select.
I think we have to vote to spend the money.
You vote to spend the money, and actually to sign off on the form, you sign the form, board signs the form, and Leslie signs the form.
Okay, all right.
I'd just be a little nervous putting Temple in right now, because?
As would I.
What if we, what if, what if there are overtures and things like that, we only have thirty thousand, I mean.
Oh, I agree, and, and it, it wouldn't matter, it wouldn't matter much, because by the time you got Temple in, you're already gonna be at next year's bid prices.
So it could be higher?
It could, it will be higher.
So.
Let's do it without Temple.
So that's why my suggestion was to begin with, um, for now, would be Hosmer, Keys.
And then, we can also approve Hartwell at this point?
Right, and we just don't send it in till we get the new allotment.
Right.
Sure.
So, can I? Don't you think we should do the Temple first? Because that's the one that highly traveled, you know, Hosmer and Key, what's the superiority? I'm just saying, you know.
I, I, I don't know, ask, ask the director that question, I don't.
Temple Street is the one, you know, more, a lot of cars goes by.
I've, I've, I've driven Temple, um, I know it does need some work, it's not as seriously delaminated, certainly, um, as Keys and Hosmer, um, I think those are in the worse shape, and I'm trying to get the jobs done, so all the equipment is in the same proximity, so we don't have to pay for a trucking charge to go from one end of town to the other. That being said, if you decided to do Hartwell and Temple, you'd be in about the same ballpark number, and then hold off on the other two, but, um.
With your recommendation to us, is Keys and Hosmer are in worse shape?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Is it less money, uh, like Keys and Hosmer, because there's no sewage?
There's no sewage? No, because all, anything, um, any, any structures, um, that have to be in there, they all have to be adjusted, so sewage really doesn't have anything to do with it, unless, uh, we were looking at replacing, uh, water and sewer lines.
No, I was just, I was just talking about raising structures, there's less structures to raise, obviously.
Yeah, cause that, that does add up, I haven't gone out honestly and counted them yet, but I think I have enough of a buffer in here to consider all.
Plus, it went la, the last round we did, didn't the DPW guys actually do the, they did all the raising and lowering of the structures?
They did, they did.
We did that in-house.
Some of them, they did all, they did, yeah, you're right.
A fair amount of them, yeah.
They do, do repairs now, I don't know of any that they've done on a full pave job. They have a company that comes with a paver, who is a subcontractor for the paver, and just zips through it in, in no time.
Yeah, but they, they took care of the, raising up the manhole covers, right, the couple days before they came in, swept the streets, raised the manhole covers, they came came in, did their thing, and then they finished whatever they have to do afterwards, I guess, to lower them back down, or however, I don't know.
Yeah, sometimes they just cover them, so the machines can go over it, because they don't have to be adjusted at all, because they're in good shape, and sometimes they have to actually chop them out, add bricks, depending on the depth of which got left, so.
Well, him being the director, I would think that's his call, I mean, if he wants to do DPW, yeah, you're right, I think, I can't remember what speed it is, we did use DPW, I can't remember.
Yeah, I remember what you're saying, we saved X, I forget which one, but we saved X amount of dollars, because we did that in-house.
Right.
And I'm not, again, like John said, I'm not advocating for that, it's your project, I'm not going to tell you how to do your, do the project.
I'm, I really am all about saving the buck, but when, you only have really a solid two-month timeframe to get construction projects done, because, only because of school and summer vacations for everybody, you've really got to try to move through them as quickly as possible.
So these prices you have now are bid prices?
These are bid prices from last year, so these are good until June thirty, and we're getting our new bids ready to put out on the street now, but those will be affected July first, next fiscal.
I rounded, I dropped it off. I'll make a motion to approve Keys and Hosmer Street at a not-to-exceed two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar number.
Well, that's Key, Hosmer, and Hartwell.
Two fourteen, I mean.
Just Keys and Hosmer is two fourteen?
Oh, I'm sorry, two eighty, I'm, I-
So, aren't you including Keys?
Yeah, no, I was including Hartwell, hold on.
It's two fourteen.
So, not to exceed two twenty.
I'll second.
Okay, so, I'm just curious, are we gonna, and then are we gonna vote separately on Hartwell?
Well, you're not looking for Hartwell, but that you're doing that-
Well, they, I mean, like, you can approve them all now, we just have to hold back on our submittal to Mastod.
What would you prefer?
If it's easy for you to approve them now, I'm still not going to send them in until we have the money there, so.
Well, you're going to have to get new bids for that, because it's going to be after July.
We won't.
So that number could be-
But that can, that could be amended, Mastod is very easy to work with, as far as Chapter Ninety comes, that could be amended at a later date.
I don't care what we do.
But, I mean, it's just as easy to come back to you guys again and go with the-
We love having you, so I have a motion and a second for Keys and Hosmer, any other discussion? Herring, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, and also under the agenda is other, do you have anything else you wanted to speak to us about?
No, other than, except I understand that you had a meeting last week, that I wasn't able to make regarding the stainless steel bodies, so I guess everybody's up to, up to speed on what we're trying to do, and also with the controls, the speed controls, just want to stress on how important those are.
I think, I think we all understand that now from, from our meeting.
Okay.
It's kind of, kind of shocking that how much money we've spent, that we could, we could avoid it.
So it should be a good savings.
Well, a lot of people honestly were afraid to put the extra money into a stainless body, only because of the cost of a stainless body, but they weren't looking down the, down the road to see how much money it really does save them.
No, I'm talking, I think we're talking more about the spreaders.
Oh.
How they-
Very important, when you, when you, when you, you're jumping a truck to, like I said, seven hundred and fifty or eight hundred pounds per lane mile, and it should only be, throw it out two forty, that's a lot of, that's a lot of waste, a lot of waste, and you've seen it in the streets, we've talked about this before, so it's a lot of waste.
Mr. Chairman, I, can you just give the public an update on the bridge at the top of Goodyear, like Malden?
Malden Road, as far as I know, they haven't started, I went up there and saw the detour signs in place, but I have not seen any work going on up there yet.
I haven't, that's why I wanted to bring it up, and I noticed that they didn't do any signs either at Newton Street or at the bottom of Goodyear.
Yeah, I don't believe they're done setting up, I have recently seen them setting up their signs, their VSMs are up, and not all of them are running, so the only thing you really see is the, obviously, the warning signs, the orange warning signs.
Do you know if they are going to put any more signs, like at the, around Newton Street or Goodyear?
Absolutely, yeah, some, I'll certainly give them a call, just Newton Street, and, uh-
Well, either coming up Newton, like-
Newton and, um-
Corner of Newton, Goodell, are you talking about?
Yeah.
There is one in Goodell, after the-
But not till you get way up.
Not, not your area. Upper Goodell, there is one, after the-
Right.
Stonewall.
Right.
On the bottom of Lee Street is the one?
Yeah.
Yes, there is one at the bottom of Lee, but I'm just, I'm thinking around Newton and Goodyear.
Okay.
Because there's a fair amount of traffic that comes from that side.
Okay, I'm on it, do, did they give you, did the gentleman that was here give you a detour schematic?
Did he say he was going to talk to the police chief when we got to that?
He was going to talk to the police chief, yes. Because there were some concerns about the bus, remember the school bus?
Yeah, the police chief had some questions, so, I mean, you might be-
Yeah, we were both here that night, but, um, I don't, I just didn't see him handing any paperwork for a schematic to show you what he was saying.
I think they were going to, I think they were going to talk about that.
Okay, okay, we'll take care of that, sure.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
I just have one more thing, street sweeping, is that-
They're on it every day, they've been sweeping, it's-
Are we, are we on schedule?
Um, actually, we're a little bit ahead of schedule.
A little bit ahead, okay.
Trying to get it cleaned up as soon as possible, so we can get into our winter repairs.
I think there's a lot less sand, from what we're using, so I can imagine emptying this sweeper is not as much now as it was in the past.
That's correct, it's tremendous cost-saving not to be using too much sand.
Right.
You do need it for Britain, so, and if you have sensible salting, you really don't need an awful lot of sand.
And then in regards to the steel body and all those things, I believe the Board asked that you look over a ten-year plan of what we might need, I think Nancy spoke to you about that, so that's something you're going to try to-
Yeah, actually, Nancy, I was just talking about that today, so we, we work on that. Another thing about the stainless bodies, which I didn't say, when it comes time, or I don't know if I mentioned, well, I obviously wasn't here at a meeting, but when it comes time to purchase a new truck, all you're buying is a cabin chassis.
Right.
Because those bodies just go, and they, and they stay forever.
So that'll be-
I've had, I've had bodies in other towns that are thirty and forty years old that were stainless, and that's when they first began to come out, because some towns bought one to see what they were like, so.
And then I just, you can talk to Nancy in regards to this, in regards to cleanup from the winter, in regards to plows, ruining lawns and things like that, are you, do you have that list, are you working?
Yes, we get, we have a complaint logged down there, and we know where we have to go, and we put them down chronologically as they call in, obviously, we know some of the spots that we've gone and done, and they are starting to repair that now, we did go out by grass seed and loop, so.
And you can talk to Nancy in regards to some issues that we had, that I had.
Okay.
Okay, anything else from the Board? Okay, thanks very much for coming.
Thank you.
List for all warrant articles received.
It's in your agenda package, what we have so far, we have twenty-six articles, I gave you the articles, and I gave you the breakdown on the article number seventeen, which is the surplus bond proceeds, just so that you'd see what we're talking about for money, and I know we don't go into detail at this meeting, it's detail at the next meeting, but if you have any questions.
Why do we have money left over for borrowed money from ninety-four and ninety-nine? Just because?
Just because, this, this was-
Didn't have sunset clauses, I would guess?
We didn't use sunset clauses back then.
Right, that's, which is good, but we use that now.
This was back when they did the original sewer down in the industrial area.
So this is just to look over the articles that we have coming up, and that next meeting?
Next meeting, we vote the articles.
And then I just, maybe if we can think about this for the next meeting, what, if anything, the Board's going to say or do in regards to the petition articles?
Mm-hmm.
So, we can discuss that at the next meeting, but I don't know if anybody has any questions or concerns, they can send them to Nancy, and we can talk about it at the next meeting.
And, ask one, the petition article, is this has to be on the twenty-five and twenty-six, or can we?
We typically always put the petition to articles, the last articles on the warrant.
That's the way I've recalled any that we've ever had at the last decade.
Do you think it'll, people will stay that long?
I, I mean, it's just, we're not doing anything different, we're keeping it the same as we've done every petition article, I think the last meeting we had a petition article was the last article.
Right, if they're interested, they'll stay.
So I don't, I don't think we're changing the way we do it. Okay, so we'll talk about those. Next item is update on the town search, town administrator's search, we are planning, the Board, the committee is planning to have a meeting, the twenty-third, was it, John?
This Tuesday.
Yeah, next Tuesday, the twenty-third, one of the members were away, we couldn't have it this week, and then last week, one of the members was tied up, so we're going to try to have our first meeting to look over the applications on the twenty-third.
How many do we have?
Uh, pile, we're looking through them now, we're going to make photocopies for the committee, stack of them, so that's the update, anybody have any questions?
More than what we've had in the past, or?
I think it was as many, maybe a few more, yeah.
I think there were more.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so that's where that's, the Subcommittee will meet, look through the applications, I was wondering what he was doing. Okay, next is town administrators' report update, you can go any way you'd like, Nancy.
Okay, sure, we, you may recall that we entered through the Community Compact, we decided to go forward with a wage and classification study, we engaged the Collins Center for Public Management to conduct that study for all the positions under the Personnel BiLAR, we met with the Collins Center and the Personnel Board, and we laid out the process, right now, we have put together a schedule to meet on three different, at three different times, on two different days, we are going to conduct one-hour orientation meetings with all the employees to let them know what we're doing, the process we're going to follow, and, so that's where we're going right now with that, and hopefully, we're going to be finishing this up by the end of June, that's the plan, anyway.
The wage study that we did?
The last five?
I mean, what I'm hearing is, some employees didn't like the way it came out, so it's being scrapped, and that's, that's, the issue was, some people weren't happy because their positions were changed, and they were being paid above grade, and we were going to look at those positions, and now we're starting over?
That's, back in January, before the town administrator retired, she signed a contract with the Collins Center to have them come out and do another study.
This won't cost us anything?
No, this, we got the money through the grant from Community Compact.
So it's not costing the town-
It won't cost us anything.
Doesn't cost the town anything, but it's-
Taxpayer's money, but not our taxpayers that are, are taxes.
We have to spend that grant on this, we can't spend it on something else.
Well, this is what we put in for.
Oh, so we got what we asked for.
We got what we asked for.
Yeah, I kind of agree with Pat, we're just-
If, if this comes back, and the results are the same, those are the results, and the people that are affected, I'm sorry, but you're being paid too much for what you do, based on two different wage studies, I don't want to have, come back and say, oh, we're not going to go with that, that's, I mean, I, I, I want to go on record as saying that, I, I don't want to sound cold-hearted, but if you're being overpaid, or you're being underpaid, we're going to find out through this wage study, and, you know, this is the second one we've done in the past twelve months, because a few people didn't like the results, and that's, I don't think that's right.
I'm, I agree with Pat, but I'm confused that we're doing another one because the town administrat, I mean, I don't think we're doing it because there's a few employees that are upset with the last one, are we? Why, the town administrator wanted to do another one? Do we know why she wanted to?
I believe, when we applied for the Community Compact, we identified two projects, one was the Personnel Study, and the other one was having a tool to be able to forecast where we are financially better five and ten years out, financial forecasting tool, and those are the two projects that we applied for, and we were given funds to do that, and I believe that the Collins Center, we just signed this in January before she left.
Well, I guess, so we asked, we put this on a list, this, this Board put this on a list.
Yes, yes.
So I guess, I don't recall why we put it on the list again, but I imagine there was some, there was some discussion.
Frankly, when it's free money, grant money-
Well, we could have, we could have went for something else then, if we-
You don't ask too many questions, though, when we're not have to pay for it.
Right, but I mean, we could have asked, there was a whole list of things we could have asked.
I can pull that list out if you would like again.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't, I mean, I'm, we're done now, but I'm just wondering, I'm sure the town administrator that was sitting must have had a good argument to us for us to put it on the list, we did put it on the list.
Pat's, he's correct, I mean, we'll have two opinions, and we'll see what happens with them.
Right.
See if they coincide.
And I would suggest we use both opinions.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Oh, well, I don't know how we can use both, because what if one says you're two, ten thousand overpaid, and one says you're ten thousand underpaid? We're going to have to pick, well, we're going to have to pick the newest study, because this is, this is a year later, so it's going to definitely be changes.
And, and we went over comparable communities, when, when we decided we were going to do it in-house, I consulted with a couple of managers, and they said you could outreach to Department of Revenue, when I outreach to Department of Revenue, and they ran all the numbers, and they, they gave us a list of comparable communities, and when I mentioned, we went to the Personnel Board, and I explained how we came up with our list, the Collins Center, their approach is getting towns that are close by you, and who are we losing people to? And I said, quite frankly, we're not losing people to anywhere, people who come to work for the town of West Borlston, many of them retire from West Borlston, I mean, what we've, who we've lost, we've lost police officers that move on to a community that might have a little more action, might be a little larger, we've lost some firemen, but most people are going to go east, you know, and even when we talked about, we lost a DPW director, but he went to his hometown, so he didn't have an hour commute, and he commutes for two miles, so we don't have a lot of loss here.
Well, we, I think, I don't know, we have to, we've building inspectors, we've, we've gone through, but I mean, that's what the study's going to show us, and then just, well, I guess we can compare both, but we're going to have to pick one when we get to that point, so. Okay, update on the Townwide Cleanup Day, which is April twenty-
Okay, the Townwide Cleanup Day is, is a week from Saturday, rain or shine, we, following the cleanup, the volunteers will be invited to lunch at Town Hall, want to point out that the Mill is providing two of their signature pasta dishes with bread and salad, Steve's Pizza's going to provide pizza, resident Kate Boston will serve several Thai dishes, Frozone, thank you for approving their permit, they'll be in the parking lot serving gelato, and the volunteers are going to receive wristbands, which allow them to visit recess the day of the event from one to six, the numbers are coming in, a lot of people are volunteering, and we had a meeting earlier today, we're going to have, set up the night before on Friday, we're going to have captains' meetings on Saturday morning, and everything seems to be rolling along smoothly.
I'm not eating Friday. Just so I'm hungry. Okay, so that's the twenty-seventh, I have it here, from nine in the morning till noon, rain or shine.
Hopefully, it won't rain, what do you think, it will rain?
I'm just reading the, I'm reading the post there.
So, last time you-
It's, it's rain or shine, we did Cleanup Day in the rain.
Yeah.
Last time we did.
Yeah, okay, next is general update on the Senior Center, it's-
It's open, people are using it, they moved in last Friday, isn't it, Friday? Friday.
Yeah.
And we, actually, another update today, we actually had the remainder of the items brought to, we took some file cabinets here at Town Hall in the basement, and the rest of the items went to the recycling center.
So everything that's, there is there, everything that's going to the Senior Center.
And everything's out of the church?
Everything's out of the church.
Yeah, and we just, there's some items that we're still going through, a list of issues with the building, some of the, what's the list called? The-
Punch List.
Thank you, yeah, the Punch List, and then some furniture issues, but everything's, they're open and they're working, nothing's holding up using the building.
Mm-hmm.
So, and it looks great, so if you have time to go down there and take a look at it, you should do that. So I guess, do we have to vote as a Board now to consider voting to sign off on substantial completion?
Well, you own the building.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to-
Motion to sign off substantial completion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any other discussion, when, again, we did discuss this at the building meeting, there was questions, and the Building Committee voted to bring, send it to the Board of Selectment to vote. Any other discussion?
Do we have the open-up detail? Open-up detail? Open-ups?
You can get that, yeah.
Not yet?
I, I don't have it on the, the list, but I'll, that's all right, so we can vote, I have a motion and a second on this, any other discussion? Herring, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the next is, I'm not going to do the next one, since it's zero, D and L, these are invoices, D and L Billiards, invoice two-six, two-oh-two for five thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Herring, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Next is D and L Billiards, invoice two-six, two-seven-one for two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-two cents.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Herring, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Next is KP Law, invoice number one-two-zero-zero-five for seven hundred and three dollars.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? RAC Builders Incorporated, payment number twelve for thirteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Collier International invoice number five-thirty-six for nine thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Uh, next is Shanahan invoice number two-seven-three-seven-three for nineteen thousand five hundred and sixty and forty cents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Uh, next is Shanahan invoice number two-seven-three-seven-four for four thousand six hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-four cents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And there, there are, there is money aside if there's any issues or any, any open paving issues like that, right?
Probably five percent, so it's about two hundred and twenty, two hundred and forty thousand.
So just because what, the building's open and it's going, there's still money because the paving's not going to happen until the weather gets nice. Landscaping and things outside aren't going to happen, so.
And some painting, yeah.
And some, yeah, some things that need to be fixed, so. We are hopefully on top of it. Appointments and resignations. Uh, in the past, uh, do we want to read through all of these, or do we want to, I think Pat, one year you made a motion as listed in the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the appointments as listed in the agenda.
Second.
Uh, for this, I'm sorry, concurrence on the following town administrators' appointments. That's your motion, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless Nancy has a strong desire to read them all.
Works for me.
Does the board have any questions about any of them or issues? Hearing none, um, I think I have a motion and a second. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And this one here, we'll go through, consider approving the following board of selectmen appointments. I'm sorry.
The last bullet. I just want to note that Alan Harris, who's been on the Board of Health since nineteen eighty-nine.
I'm sorry.
Notified the town that he will not be seeking reappointment. Um, I prepared a letter for the board to sign thanking him for his years of service in the signature file.
Oh, great. Thank you. That's, thank you to Mr. Harris. Okay, now, consider approving the following board of selectmen. Christopher Olson is full member of the ZBA with term to expire on April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
This is twentieth, is it? Should be twentieth or?
April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, what?
Who's got the wrong agenda? Is it, should be the thirtieth or the twentieth?
Thirtieth.
I have the third, so moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Obstain.
Okay. Uh, John Benson as full member of the ZBA with a term to expire April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
So.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
You don't, you don't have to abstain just because you're on the committee, but that's fine if you, if you want to.
I'll be comfortable abstaining.
Charlie Whitkis as an, will be, as an associate member of the ZBA with a term to expire April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. I have a motion and a second.
A second, a motion.
I, I knew I heard a motion and a second. Um, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.